Good. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to our City of Boardman City Council meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order, so let's go ahead and stand for the Fudge of Allegiance, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
President.
Katie Norton?
Yes.
Junior? Isaac?
Present.
Brenda?
Present.
And Paul Peaker?
Here. All right, so I'd like to welcome everybody, and I just know I said that again, but we're gonna have our executive session at the beginning of our meeting today. So it's gonna kind of be weird. You're gonna get knocked out, kicked out of our meeting. And then we're gonna enter our Zoom in our executive session, but it won't allow you. It'll put you in the waiting room. When we are done with our executive session, everybody will be kicked out of the waiting room. And then we'll come back and resume back into our regular city council meeting. So that's, we don't know how long it's gonna last, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's how it's gonna be as far as the recording on Zoom. So at this time, I will recess this meeting at seven o'clock to go into our executive session. ORS 192-6602E Real Estate and ORS 192.662A for Labor. And this meeting is now recessed. Wait for that. Okay, we will resume our regular city council meeting. And there were no decisions made in our executive session, so we'll go right on to approval of minutes. We'll start off with the November 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 2nd, 2021 as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Having hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle?
Approve.
Katie Norton?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Keever?
Yes. The November 18th, 2021 special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the special city council meeting dated November 18th as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any question? Roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle?
Approved.
Katie Norton?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Keever?
Yes. November 29th, 2021 joint workshop session with BCDA.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes for the November 29th special workshop.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have a question? Roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
All good?
Approved.
Katie Norton?
Approved.
Here?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Paul Peaker?
Yes. November 30th, 2021, public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the public hearing dated November 30th, 2021 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any question? Roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle?
Approved.
Katie Norton?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Keever?
Yes. Moving on to financial report, October 31st, 2021.
If I were missing your packet, kind of, it was the last quarter of it, big packet this time. Nothing really extraordinary to point out in, in October, just catching up on the financials, getting those in your packet. Somebody has questions in October's. Hey, as none, your November ones was on your place setting when you came in. We just got those big reconciliations in and done, so these are caught off the pad. Our big one to point out, it was the month of November. So we did receive about 99% of the property taxes that we had budgeted for already. Everybody likes to get in their 3% discount, so most of those property taxes do come in in November. That's pretty usual. So that was our big jump in revenue for, for the month of November. And that is what the majority of our general operating costs run off of for the full year. So we're, we're pretty confident where we stand now to cover our expenses. Yes, but.
Marsha, I have a question. I was looking at the banner bank checking from the October and the banner checking from November. And I want to try to have a bite. It's down about $445,000.
Uh, yes, so we try not to have a big balance in our checking account. We're trying to keep what, because that account does not earn any interest. So we do try to keep in there, it's what we need to cover our expenses. So that one will fluctuate a lot. And then it depends on the payments that we get, how close to the end of the month. And we try to move it over to our LGIP, which is what the state treasury account, where we actually make some interest on it, which the interest rates are right next to them. And you can see as well that a lot of those interest rates came down from October to November. So they've steadily been decreasing over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions concerning the financial reports? Having hearing none, we'll go into the public comment. Tori, is there something you would like to share today?
Go ahead, Renee.
Okay, sorry, Tori, Renee.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we have a lot going on at the chamber this month with the holidays coming up. On Thursday, we will be hosting another paint night. It'll be a winter slash holiday themed one. And there are still a few spots available, so you can register and find that on our website and social media. The next week, we have our chamber luncheon on Wednesday, the 15th at noon, and the Boardman Fire will be our speakers. They'll be giving some updates with the new fire station. The next day, the 16th, we have our Chamber After Five. That's at 5:00 PM. It'll be at the Sage Center, and it'll be an opportunity for the community to come and check out the new Amazon Think Big space. There'll be our community grand opening for that, and all are welcome to this free event, even if you are not a chamber member. Then Friday, the 17th, the Sage Center is hosting movie night, which will be showing Jim Carrey's version of The Grinch. It's just $5, and that includes popcorn and a bottle of water with your admission. The musical Christmas lights are going on at the Sage Center, and it'll be every night throughout the month of December. And we just want to give a reminder that if you signed up for the Giving Tree, to make sure you have your gifts dropped off at our office inside the Sage Center by December 14th. Make sure that they are unwrapped and to include the child's identifying information on it. And we're also hosting a food drive with Riverside and Heffner FFA chapters. And so you can bring in any non-perishable food items you have and drop them up, off underneath the decorated trees that the schools did. We are also accepting nominations for our annual awards banquet. The link for that can be found on our social media and website as well, and we have the form available in English and Spanish. And we also have a new member at the chamber this month that we want to welcome. That's Daisy Lily Thrift Boutique. They just opened up next to Subway, so be sure to stop by and welcome them to Boardman. And then lastly, we also want to remind everyone that the North Moro Transfer Station will be closed this Saturday due to staffing issues. They will be open regular hours again on Sunday.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else on the Zoom that would like to have some public comment tonight?
Uh, this is Kelly Doherty. Hi, Wood.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. You have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to discuss the appeal of ZPT, or ZP, 2021-031. Um, I believe that I sent out emails to all the commissioners. I received one email back. I'm still a little befuddled on how we went from 402, tax lot 402, 403, 405, and 3201 to five different tax lots. I, I would like to request at this time that my fee be refunded to me along with um, my time to prepare and research my comments, my rebuttal, and my attendance for the meetings. Um, for $600, I'd also like to ask for $400 for a Luba appeal because you haven't addressed my appeal at the city council level. And I, I feel like it needs to be addressed, and no one is addressing it. Um, I appealed four tax lots. You approved five, two of which were not in my appeal, one of which was left out. I don't know, you know, if we can amend that, how we're going to deal with that, but I feel like the process was, was really is that my time limit?
No.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, was somebody being admitted in? No, there is no time going right now.
Okay, okay. It said three minutes, so I wasn't sure. Um, anyway, I, I feel, I feel like I want to keep my appeal in place, but I would like refunded for my time, my effort, my commitment, and my fee. And additionally, now I'm going to have to appeal it to Luba because we don't have the correct lots. If anyone has any comments, I know I sent out all the stuff. I don't know what the commissioners saw as far as the record. It seems like the few commissioners that I've talked to did not have the full entire record in, in front of them, so I don't know how they made their decision. I've asked for a copy of that from several of the counselors. I haven't got it, so I suppose I'll do a public request and, and find out what was actually in front of you guys, but I don't understand how you can substitute tax lots from my appeal, which was four tax lots, and put in those, those five other tax lots. It's, that's just unheard of. Anyway, I'd, I'd like to hear some discussion on that. Thank you.
Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, any other comment you?
We just leave the comment and listen. You typically don't engage in conversation. Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. Uh, thank you, Kelly, for your comments and concerns. Uh, going to the next, is there someone else that would like to share any, uh, public comment? Okay, having hearing none, uh, we'll go on to our action uh, resolution 16-2021. Could, before we start on this one, could I get a, some sort of a background on what's going on on this? Now, I think this is, is this something that we've always done?
Not, not always. It's been, so it started two years ago. Dan already came in and did presentation. He went through all the, he jumped through all the hoops, stopped ODF and W, got all the right permitting to do it within the city limits for a deprecation. I'm not aware, and I guess I'll need to ask Karen, if he improved the access permitting from this past year from creepers here. Did they, did they come in and do the permitting? Did they come in and ask for permission each time they hunted? Instead of trying to do the blank?
He emails us and the police department that they're gonna hunt the next day.
And so, so the first year he did it, he was supposed to, every time before they hunted, they were supposed to come in, and they kind of just did a blanket one. Um, and we talked to him about it, and then since then, it sounds like he is doing it correctly. I haven't had any complaints uh, other than I have a few people that I know that hunt, that would like to also be involved, but he's thinking about who he lets out there, so.
The area, the land, is it the one right on the corner by across from the school?
Not Wilson and May.
Across from?
Wilson and May, the one, the schools here and the?
It's southeast field.
It's across from?
Well, I, and I'm not saying that one.
Anderson Road, down here, this one up here.
So, Mr. Keever, you are correct.
East, east.
I'm talking the right, this, we're on the same line.
You're talking about that circle.
The circle where all the geese land on that corner, right there.
And he?
West of the school, east of the school.
East of.
Yes, east of the school. So you got the street, you got the lot, and then you got the school.
Right. And, and then he has some pretty specific areas that he has to be in to hunt. Uh, there's definite restricted zones, well away from the roads. So, and they, and they have to, they can't shoot towards a road, so.
I, I think we included the maps. I didn't put them in color there.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that. I was just making sure I knew. Um, and this probably should be during discussion, but uh, uh, I was kind of stepping ahead. Is this a good thing?
No, you should discuss this right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we vote, we, we read the ordinance, then we get a second, and then there's a discussion or question, and I kind of wanted to get how kind of idea, I just go on, I'm kind of going.
I haven't, I haven't had any complaints, and I think out of everybody here, I'm probably gonna be the one that would get the most complaints for that specific thing. And I, I have not had any complaints, so.
Are there certain dates that they can do it as of on?
Just, just, I mean, during hunting season, it's.
And they have that one.
And, and he's limited on how many people he can bring in at a time.
Yeah.
And I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when we heard the first discussion that came into the presentation, he talked about the reach of the rifle or the shotgun and how far the, the pellets would travel. Uh, as long as they were always aiming towards the center of this circle, it had very little risk to ever exceed that circle. And we heard from the chief of police at the time, you talked about it. That was a pretty in-depth presentation.
Yeah, and there was a lot of concerns. And one was, they would be out there hunting about the same time kids would walk into school.
That was by.
Right, and, and, and I, as far as I know, there was never any complaints or any, any kids who thought they were being shot at or, or even the loud noises that scared them. There also wasn't, there was residential there. I hadn't heard any of that complaint. Uh, there's more noise complaints about the cannon going off at Lamb West, as my thought.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I I have my reservations, but they're personal. I think as long as he's following all the rules and that it's probably not a, it's not a bad thing.
And that's what I was kind of looking, I'm kind of looking for people who, what their true feelings are because it comes down to a perception and a personal feeling on whether you think it's appropriate for, for inside our city limits or not.
Yeah, and my concern is, is that they allow them to put decoys out to draw birds into an area that they want to get rid of birds. To me, that's, doesn't make sense. The bird's gonna land there regardless, then I think you should go and shoot them to actually attract birds in, but his and ODF and W backs him up on this, that you can train these wild geese. You, you get them to come to your circle, you shoot at them, and they don't come back. So by bringing them in and shooting at them, he's training them not to come back? I don't buy it personally. I think it's a, I think they're, I think they're doing it because their friends want to hunt, but that's my personal opinion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, the whole purpose behind this was to, uh, they're, these geese are causing damage to his crops. And therefore, it wasn't designed as a hunting type excursion. It was to, uh, deal with the problem at hand. And I can tell you that, uh, as far as I'm aware, he's been very compliant. I've not received any complaints, uh, outside of the ordinary. The biggest thing I hear is he's very selective of who he lets out there, which I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing. This is, um, if he, if the responsible, uh, folks that have the legal rights, we've been doing, I don't have a problem.
Do we monitor it? I mean, as far as police?
Yeah, you can't, you can't see them when they're shooting unless you get on the far side, so. Um, are we in the area? Yes. Do we get any calls about it? Typically not. I think most everybody's kind of, it's been going on for, I don't know, four years, five?
Two or three.
This, this is the third season. Is it the third season? Um, so, um, it's not new. Well, and, and they also have done this at the city, by the Marina Park.
Yeah, I remember they used.
We don't do that anymore. They came up with a different plan. Um, but that was, that went on for seven years. It was usually youth hunters that got to do that. Uh, well, within city limits. Those I heard every morning, which I hear anyway, even once in a while.
Don't we?
Yeah, we all hear, right? Yeah, so it is what it is. They came up with a better plan at the Marina Park. I won't go into detail on that because.
Yeah. Um, all right, I, do I hear a, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 16-2021.
Do we need to read the, the? Yeah, how about we do that, please?
A resolution to establish a special Canada goose taking in specific areas under the supervision of Land or Animal Guarding on Tax Pot 407 of 4 North, 2516, and Tax Pot 101 of 4 North, 2521, and repealing resolution 2821.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. I know I started the question a little bit early, but is there any other question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle?
Approved.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Approved.
Brenda?
Uh, yes, and Paul Peaker.
Yes. So that resolution passes. Let's go ahead and look at, uh, resolution.
I think we, we put this, we didn't necessarily put this resolution, if you read my, uh, notes to you. We put it in here, uh, in case you wanted to pass it, but this is the discussion, uh, someone asked for Barry to put the bring forward, uh, his report on the traffic over there on Fager and like, I guess it's Mount Hood.
So Barry, do you have something you would like to share about this?
Well, I, the memo was in your pack.
I, I, I saw that, but I was just wondering if you were, there's something, I saw the, the memo. Is there something you wanted to add or reiterate, or I guess my question is, this is not a knee-jerk reaction.
When we polled during the course of the summer, we polled a bunch of traffic counts on Mount Adams, Mount, uh, Mount Hood, Taylor Road, uh, and then Kincaid and Wilson around Fager Road. And I was surprised to find the number of vehicles that are funneling to that intersection.
Um, and if you did that in the summer, would it not be even more severe and?
In the fall, yeah.
As of, they're, they're avoiding the school zone, I understand, right?
Yeah. And, and until Chaparral Drive was put in, the only way to get from Paul Smith Road or from out, further west was to take either Wilson or Coonsy. And now they've got Mount Hood that ties into Kincaid, so that's become, we're, we're starting to notice bigger numbers on Kincaid as well.
So I guess the only thing that we're, that bothered, that, that we're, that the throng language, what concerns me is this is the reaction for the speeding around the corner. Now, I'm not saying that your study is wrong or anything about that. I'm just, uh, that's, I remember that we had a discussion about the corner. And that's why maybe the knee-jerk reaction isn't the right word. I'm just, is this going to? What's, what's?
Mount Hood, Mount Hood and Kincaid, once connected, are no longer a local street. They're, they're a minor collection. Because traffic is getting off, uh, uh, Wilson Road at Mount Hood and traveling through to Kincaid and coming out at Main Street. So it's a change of classification from what was originally a local street.
Kind of being.
Stop signs at those, at those intersections.
Which are?
There's already a stop sign on Mount Hood and on Kincaid, correct? That's not, that's not where they want to put the stops, they want to put stops on Fager Road, correct? So the stop sign already exists at the end of Mount Hood and at the end of Kincaid. Correct?
Correct. So we're just adding another stop sign?
But that's what I don't understand. If, if all the traffic is going down Mount Hood and Kincaid, there's already a stop sign there.
You're also, you're, you're also coming in from, from Fager, from the north and from the south.
Okay, but so you, yeah, so you probably would say that, that's, there's a problem. Because what you said was that the Mount Hood is getting a lot more traffic, but it already has a stop sign. So that isn't relevant to.
Yeah, they're avoiding the first set of stops and going to the second.
So they're going to Fager to come down, so they have to stop and then come around the corner, but that's what I can talk about. This needs to be out there so everybody understands. That's my point, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, um, I would suggest, or at least it would be my suggestion at this point, to take several things into consideration. I've got some notes. Um, I've been referring to the manual on uniform traffic control devices. It talks a lot about the process for establishing traffic control devices and that there should be a standard. Along with that standard is doing traffic engineering. Um, I don't know that an engineer has looked at this particular incident. Stop signs are not to be used to slow traffic ever. They're never to be used to slow traffic. Um, they're used to control traffic flow. Some of the processes, and, and as you can see, let me share this real quick. I, I, I put down some notes here, but uh, sign should not be, or sign, stop sign should be installed in an intended control volume. Stop sign installation should be consistent with the magnitude of traffic conflicts. The indiscriminate use of stop signs results in unnecessary delay energy use and increased risk for accidents and non-compliance, based on non-compliance. And as you see there, this is a, a, a standard practice, a, a, a stop sign policy, and uh, it talks a lot about collector streets and so on and so forth. I think it's important that we have the city of Boardman have an established practice on how we are going to address this issue, because this won't be the only time somebody comes and complains that they feel a stop sign is necessary.
Do we not have a stop sign policy? Do we not have a traffic control policy?
Part of the reason that it's been kind of hit or miss is because we didn't have the traffic counters. Now that we're building that database, it's, it's, there's certain trends that we're seeing on certain roads that have been a little bit surprising.
Uh, I, I.
In terms of volume.
I, again, I, I, I know that there are concerns at that intersection. I'm not trying to downplay those concerns. I just believe that we should have a process in place to review these and uh, have a recommendation based on either the advice. This doesn't say you have to use an engineer, but they highly suggest using an engineer on, on traffic issues like this. Um, and if you can't afford one to at least correspond with one to issue a plan. Um, I, I see in the, in the near future, more people coming in and saying this is an issue or an concern of ours. Can we please address that? I think rather than throwing up stop signs, uh, in this situation, I think it would be my suggestion that we do it. In this situation, I think it would be my suggestion that we do it, uh, have an engineer review it. And make a suggestion and they may say, put in a four way stop. But if you read some of the, the, the discussion here, they're not really suggesting a four way stop. They, you know, they, they, they want to, the higher traffic. The higher volume traffic should be the through street and the other side streets have the stops on. So I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm just trying to make sure that we have a process in place to do this appropriately. And I'm not saying that Barry didn't do that. I'm just saying that I, I, I think we should have a, a, an engineer review these. Uh, as we can or come up with a process to, uh, address these issues. Um, I think it's only fair to our community that if they come and say, hey, I've got an issue, that we have a process, a standard that we use to. Uh, evaluate this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can I address?
You may.
So Barry, I have a question for you. So just so I understand, if there's more traffic, is, is there more traffic going through Mount Hood onto Kincaid? As a through street where Fable is not a through street at all. It has, it's a dead end.
It's, it's a dead end, but it's, but it's classified as a minor collector as well. So they're both classified as a minor.
Only because of Kincaid. So before, before Kincaid was put in. It was not a, a. A through street.
No.
So it wouldn't be a collector.
The school was used to bounce across.
Right, right. Well, and I did it in high school, it's still crossing that road.
And so the rocks?
Yeah, yeah, so they put big block out there. Um, but anyway, so is there, is there a way to look at? Which one has the most traffic? And if, if, if Mount Hood to Kincaid actually has the most traffic. Would it make more sense to, to remove those stop signs and put the stop sign on Fable?
The drop off from the stop sign at Wilson on Kincaid to just before Mount Hood. Was minimal. In fact, there's five hundred and twenty vehicles that go past the, the. Either turn or go past. The. Just before the intersection with Mount Hood. And on Kincaid. We counted eight hundred and thirteen. Now, a lot of that is coming out of Wilson Road Trailer Park. And one up to get on Mount Hood to go to Kincaid.
Or Fable.
Yeah, they could come out on Fable, but that.
They, they could come out on Fable, but my gut hunch is they're going to Kincaid.
You got three hundred more. You got three hundred.
Are you talking about Wilson Road Trailer Park or are you talking about?
Wilson Road Trailer Park.
Wouldn't they turn on Fable? They wouldn't go on to Mount Hood?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
They come out through the back of the trailer park.
They're not on the street.
You're not on the street. They're on a dirt trail.
Yeah, they.
It's hard back.
Okay.
So that, that was the struggle because we hadn't put. Counters on that section of Mount Hood between. Those two connection points that we put together like four years ago, five years ago.
I, I guess I just have concerns about putting a four, a four way stop.
Do we need to still?
If we do a better traffic study, we might find that opening Mount Hood through. Might make more sense. If there's more traffic there, that would be your main through there.
Hi, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mr. Prophet.
I have a question about, um, the traffic study. I was reading some of the bullet points up there. And, um, one of the things that I encounter when I'm out about is that stop when I'm doing fifty five down a freeway. Or a highway and having to stop is harder for me to do than, than encountering a side street. So when I'm coming up to a side street, I almost anticipate a stop as opposed to a full on straightaway. And then all of a sudden, there's a big light in the middle of the road. And so I'm wondering how that part was written about not stopping, not putting up a stop sign to slow down traffic. If that was.
Well, the stop sign has never been designed to slow down traffic.
Precisely.
It's, it's controlled traffic flow. Uh, when it comes to highways, we're talking about a different creature. And there is, there's quite a section in this book about highways and what we can and can't do and. And, uh, I, I was trying to focus on what I could find. And listen, I did this while you guys were in here.
Okay, thank you. So I was like, I don't think I can even read it fast enough.
There's, there's a lot of stuff that I couldn't, you know, quite grasp. Uh, but, but what I, my big takeaway from this. Is we need to have a standard practice that we follow when we review this and then. Uh, if we need to go through the engineering and, and I don't speak for Karen, but, um. I, I, I just think we should do it right. Uh, I feel better that way. And I don't want to have a, a, an accident. I don't want anybody hurt. But you take in those things when you add that element. And, and they may come back and say, yeah, four way stop is needed there. I don't think that's going to be the, the answer, but. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer and that's why I would, I would relinquish to somebody who does this for the.
So it's been done twice since I lived here. Wilson Road never had a stop sign at Maine before. That was an accident and then they put a stop sign. Um, and then they wanted the post office, Boardman Avenue didn't have a stop sign at the post office. For the first ten years I lived here. That was put in after the fact. And I don't know why that was. I'm guessing because it's the post office. Because people walking, trying to cross the street hit the post office. Is this, is this particular intersection have a lot of pedestrian traffic?
Yeah.
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 It's.
They got a lot of children in that area.
Absolutely. It's kind of a rounded corner, so it's not as.
Yeah, so you know, the radius corner. So the radius corner, a lot of problem.
And it's designed to, well, anyway, it doesn't matter. I don't know why it's designed that way, but. It's, you go slower on a ninety degree than you do on a sloped curve. And I'm not suggesting that stop sign is designed just to slow down traffic, but I think that if you have to stop there. You get at least a second to pause and look up and down the street. Whereas if you come around that corner trying to beat somebody to Kincaid and, and Maine, who's going to go through. And you're just trying to get ahead of a bus or. Some other vehicle. You're not really caring about incoming traffic from other directions. And it's busy. It's busy. I go through there just periodically just to see what it's like. And I have somebody on my tail. I. Encountering people coming, though, in a busy street regardless of the third path.
I'm wondering if we just need more information. We need more information. Uh, we have a traffic study. Do we need more information on top of the traffic study? Yes, Karen?
Well.
Or Miss Pedigree?
We.
Sorry. I don't like, I don't like saying that. It's all, I, I don't say that very often.
We have hired, uh, Matt Huber from Edelson Sun to do the traffic study up on the Main Street. And, uh, I talked to him and he said that, you know, now winter isn't the time to do a traffic study and we all agree with that. And so why don't we just add that this corner onto his job? While he's coming anyway in the spring, he said, we talked about maybe March, not spring break, but you know, March or April. Long in there to do Main Street. And so then we'll just ask him to go. Set out there and do whatever they do. On that corner. I think that, I think too, that, you know, when you start doing traffic studies, you're charging twenty, twenty five thousand dollars. I mean, you don't just go get a traffic study because, because. But he won't, I'm sure he won't charge us much more. You know, to do that little section and then you, we can all get to where we feel better about. And maybe set up a standard. Or he'll help us.
I'm just trying to figure out what the best solution would be. And, uh, I just don't want to do something that might not be the best. It, it would, might be an answer, but not the best answer. If after we investigate and find everything, get all the information that we need. And come to the decision that that is what we need to do, then maybe that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
And like I say, well, we already, I didn't hire.
Yes, Katie?
I, I didn't have, I didn't keep typing in, but I don't see it.
Oh, what, I, I. What was your question, Kelly?
Sorry, I was trying to read the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So are they maybe asking about the memorandum? It's in the packet. That's the only report that we have in front of us.
And Lisa's asking if that's available online.
And the packet is online.
Yeah.
The city council packet for tonight and that's where the memorandum is at.
Lisa, did you hear that?
Towards the end of the packet.
Yes, great. Thank you. I hadn't seen it. I was surprised it was on the agenda and I travel that intersection many times a day.
You, uh, you muffled out, um.
Oh, sorry. I said I travel that intersection several times today.
And i- if you're asking about my notes, uh, I, those are just on the screen. If you, if. I, I guess I can figure out how to print them out from here, but. I don't know that they're necessary. I mean, they, they come out of, uh. It's called Musson. Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a federal.
So did we come to a consensus that we were probably just going to pull off and wait for more information?
I figure if we take it until the spring, we'll get the report back, we'll be able to make a more informed decision.
Are we going to include a traffic engineer? Is that?
That's what.
That's who that was. Was that who that was? Okay.
Okay. Uh, of course. Police report.
So, uh, the fact that everybody should have received a police report for the month of November. One thing I would recommend, again, I, I would just reinforce that. Uh, it's that time of year where our criminals are shopping at your expense by stealing your property and. And, uh, so be diligent, be aware and be a good neighbor. If you see something, say something. Again, we really, really love it when somebody calls, even if it's not, it turns out to be nothing. Trust me, we really love to hear from that because, uh, those people are paying attention and we are being called. So, um, please be safe and, and, uh, be a good neighbor. Are there any questions for me?
Um.
Mr. Prophet?
Well, um, yes, I, I do. I, sometimes I pick up some of the police for the, for the center in the mornings. And I'm on private property. But I see something that I think is. Well, it's suspect. Somebody who's kind of hiding a little bit. They go off in this big pile of. Wood left over from the lots of trees crashing. And they're just kind of hiding back in there at six o'clock in the morning. It's very. Unusual. But I hesitate to call because I think, well, it's on private property. It's not. But it wasn't two days and there was a stabbing incident in that same area. Just, and I don't know if they're related. I'm just asking, is that something like? That I should call about if I see something like that? And I think, this is weird. Who goes and hides in a pile of wood?
Absolutely. Please do. And no, those two incidents were not related. Go ahead. Yeah, in a situation like that, please call. Uh, you know, that's what our officers there. They can check it out. If it's nothing, it's nothing. And I, I would hope that most people, if they were minding their own business, would not find a fence to make sure that we're trying to take care of each other. So. Um, those are, to me, that would be a, a prime example. Please call. Um, and, and, and my officer will check it out without a doubt.
My kid was climbing through my own window and somebody called it and I'm glad they did. I wanted, I want to know that because I didn't know what was happening. That, I mean, that I just being those over protective of your neighbors and I think that's really important.
And I, I do drive around a lot, all day, you know, different neighborhoods and I see a lot of packages and stuff. I mean. And it just makes me sick because I know, uh, these, these, these guys are, they, they follow the delivery trucks. And, uh, they wait till nobody's looking and they snatch and grab. So, uh, it's happening. Uh, we've, we've, we've tried a different, couple of different measures to, uh, uh, address the situation. They're not stupid either. They know where we are all the time. They use these cell phones to let us know, let each other know where they are. So it, it, it is a battle, but, uh. Um, with your help and the community's help, we can, we can put a damper on some of their festivities. Aside from that, I, I, I can't remember if I, if I disclose this or talk to you about this at all. Um, and so if I'm repeating, because I've talked to several groups. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, since the first of the year. Uh, through our narcotics team, which is, you can tell in rural county. Uh, they've seized well over forty one thousand fentanyl pills in this two county area. And those numbers keep going up. That was a month ago and I know they just did another three hundred. Arsenal pills. Fentanyl is extremely deadly. Um, this fentanyl is not. The type of fentanyl you get from your doctor. These are pills that are being made in. Uh, Mexico and brought up here and they're just made with stamps and, and who knows what the real dosage is. So it is an epidemic. Uh, it is here. Um, our team is doing a very good job on trying to address those issues, but. Uh, when you're making a pill for less than four dollars and selling it for twenty. Um, it's a pretty good profit margin for them and, and I don't see them quitting. Uh, distributing these. And so again, highly deadly. Uh, I do have, uh, availability for Narcan, which is, uh. Used to counter those effects. If you know anybody that potentially may need some, let me know. I'll give it to you. No questions asked. We just want to make sure that nobody dies because of this, because it is a deadly drug. Okay.
I have one more thing if I might.
Yes, Mr. Prophet.
I, so I don't get all my information from social media, but I did see that there was car feeding was kind of on the rise. Are you able to like confirm that or?
Uh, what I will tell you is steps are on the rise and if your car is typically unlocked, they're probably looking in it to. It would be a good idea to lock your doors, not leave secure like, uh, your phones or computers, anything of value in your car. Even if there's a lock, you know, they can break out the door. So, um, it's that time of year. It's, it's going on everywhere. Um, usually these individuals are, uh. Uh, impulse. So as they're walking by, they see it, they grab it. It's not that they. Don't make it easy for them. Any other questions? That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any question about the building department report?
No, you just need to look at here and look at there. New home construction twelve this year. That has to be, and that's pretty fantastic for here.
Yes, it is.
And we're doing really well in Boardman, by the way.
Moving right along. Is there, uh, any question about the public works department?
Questions? Where are they on the meter inspections? Are we, is that the latest all screen?
Meter inspections.
That's not.
Backflow devices?
Oh. Yeah, I think there's, there's, I'm sorry, what did you say?
That's a great question.
I think that they're not doing it right now and. Like this week. We've hired, um. Somebody who's kind of connected with Anderson, Gary. You know, we bought that GIS system. That where we can tell where the meters are at. And so, uh, they're coming to do all of the sewer big. Main meters. So today, yesterday, today, they're on them and then so we're kind of. I really want them to get started on that. And so like you say, backflow and GIS. And first person's license. Yeah, they're getting, um.
Uh, committee reports. Is there any committee reports that we need to discuss? Uh, committee reports, is there any committee reports that we need to discuss? City manager report.
I I'd like to say in my report, I took, I talked to Matt Huber from Peterson and he'll. He's willing to do our work on Main Street, so I'll just add that. Um, we've never, we haven't come to any kind of a final agreement with uh, town members after that meeting, so. We're still waiting for that and uh. And the street lights, uh, they came and and we've got a pretty good. You know, plan for whole of the new streetlights and get some that aren't working repaired and uh. They said, oh, that it's probably February before they could um, install.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
On the street lights, the new lights, are they gonna switch to LEDs or?
Yes.
That's a great idea.
I don't think they'll ever put in.
Anything, but they're they're so much better. Good to hear that.
Well, you know, and it won't be long until you'll see them. They're going to replace the poles going down Wilson, you know, that's kind of over by the school. And all they're doing is making them a little taller, it's not gonna, it's. But when you see that going on, that that's what the process is gonna be.
Then they'll also have a little higher, uh, hopefully larger conductor.
And I, in my report, I told you that we uh, came to an agreement. For the IGA with the county on the building official.
Yeah.
So that that's a nice, that's great to have that done. Um, and. I I called the Westland irrigation district about that piece of property we have out there on Huesy and so I. I, like I put in my report, I want to, um. I'm going to start applying for water rights for out there, you know, it'll take you ten years or maybe more than that, but. I just thought if somebody uses WhatsApp for something. If I'm half, if I'm five years into it, you know, they'll be, they'll be five years into it, so.
So uh, Mr. Pedigree, the that uh, agreement we got came up with uh, Laurel County. As far as that building department, it's just a a yearly thing, it doesn't renew.
Yes, it doesn't automatically renew.
Yeah.
And and I think they're going to continue probably to look for someone, but um.
So we'll have to work with uh, trying to. Make sure that we can keep it at the agreement that we have.
Right, right. Well, and and is it, yeah, there was a lot of words smitten in this one, so it will be much easier. If if we continue it to not have to do that work. And like I say, we're gonna have the press meeting here a couple weeks, so.
Next week.
Yeah, well, is it next week already?
Next week, it's Friday.
Well, we're gonna be busy next week.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, oh.
Yes, and this week.
Yeah, oh yeah, don't forget the Christmas party.
Yeah. I won't. Did you have anything else you'd like to share, Mr. Pedigree?
No, I think you you probably read, I just want to say about going to the the safety center, you know, making the. Of Sarah Meson into the classrooms for the AWS Amazon. Your kids, this is the place to go to school, I tell you, our kids are going to have more opportunities. Uh, because of those kind of things, it's just gonna be fabulous. First off, we were open most all last year for open school and now we're gonna get more involved in the STEM programs and stuff. Our kids are just wonderful, so. We're a small town, we got lots going for us.
Counselors, you have anything to share? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to follow up on our meeting that we had with the BCEA and suggest. Early on next year, we have a special meeting to identify objectives and priorities for our council going forward for the next year.
That is a great idea.
Great idea, Leslie.
Cause that's a probably after, that just leads right into me, I was just gonna, since Lisa Middlestore and Tori Grits are up there. And we got our city manager who is involved with BCEA. I was like, they've always wanted things, why don't we just put those Lincoln stoplights on the corner and take care of it right now? Let's just get that on the plan and get that, we talked about it, said how it's important, they're looking for projects. Let's take care of the main street four way and put some blinking lights out there. That's all my comment was.
How'd you know I got a quote today?
Um, you know.
Definitely can stop lights.
You don't want to have.
Signs.
Stop signs.
Did I say stop lights?
You did.
Yeah, I don't want a stop light, I want the blinking stop sign with that it's a solar panel.
And blinking is not a word for an expletive, it is to show that it's actually flashing. Flashing.
Oh. Thank you. I won't feel it's.
Not blinking.
Thank you. I have nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
So Christmas party.
Uh, recording stopped.